District three.
And I am Matt Ryan, but as a district three supervisor, this is our first day using our new video equipment too. So we're all trying to figure this stuff out.
And district four, and I got a call from Judy. Unfortunately, she had received a call that her sister was at FFC. And so she needed to run up to the hospital and hopefully she'll be joining us a little later. District five.
Hello, Yate. I'm Lena Fowler, Coconino County Supervisor, District five. And just really thankful to see everyone in person. I live around the room and it's so great to see everyone. Just, just, it's just a feeling of thankfulness that just overwhelms you, just happiness. It just is a, it's a feeling that is great to feel. So, and I see Rose over there. And we just haven't seen each other in a long time. So thankful and being able to be here. Actually look at the, our met chair in the eyes. So thank you so much. It's thrilling us. We have a huge task before us right now. Thank you.
Yes, and, and just before we get started here, I think it is, I think was already stated, but please remember turn off your phones. And the second, and you all probably got your own individual statement that I'm going to let you know. When you enter the room, the cameras and audio are on. And the audio is good here. It captures whispers and even side chats, even if you are not directly in front of the microphone. And many of us have seen many a politician that had a hot mic. What happened? So I think it's really important that we're cognizant of this. So a modern technology. And it's great to be here as, as supervisor Fowler indicated. So at this point, let's do the pledge of allegiance. And if we can all rise, if you may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we want to have a point of courtesy, I guess is what we'll call it. Rose. We have been informed that this is your last official meeting with us. And Rose, for all of you who know, has been our deputy county attorney, has helped us through thick and thin. And has certainly been a great guiding light for the board. I've only been here for a year and before she was a guiding light for the board. She was a guiding light for me in private practice. So it's great to have you here. Come on up. We have some flowers and I think other members of the board probably would also like to make a few comments and recognition that this is your last evening with us or last afternoon with us. And believe me, we're going to really miss you. I want you to know that. And thank you for your service. Thank you for your kindness, for your legal advice. Thank you for caring about Coconino County. So it's wonderful and I really appreciate all of your help. And Vice Chair.
Sure. I'd just like to say thank you for your service. We're going to miss you and good luck with your future endeavors.
Thank you. And I guess it's not district three.
You know, it'll work for me, but I want to cry. You know, I had a chance to go out with Rose the other day and just say farewell. But we've worked together for so many years and, and through not only the good, but the hard pieces that you have to work through. And it's just been such a, you've been wonderful. And she reads everything. You know, it's like the volume of the work has just been, you know, just extraordinary. And you would not hesitate to respond to people, to be there no matter what. And I know you've been special with this. I really appreciate it, but we'll keep in touch.
Yes, yes.
And our running partner.
Yes. And district five.
Rose, you're so special. You have worked with us many years now. And just the issues that we had to address, it seemed like some were, sometimes it's easy to go through, but there were many that were so difficult and you were able to guide us through that. It is one thing to be a board, but it's another to actually have a, the county attorney that's there for you to work through issues with you, from your community issues and that is specific to your district and to the county and all the way to the state. Really, really appreciate you. And then just your vast knowledge because Coconino County is such a diverse jurisdictional issues that come up. And with that, I know you're just doing great and getting emotional because I just think that you've done such a great job in guiding us. Just really appreciate your time. And I know you're just going to bloom and I'm really excited for you. But at the same time, we're going to really leave a big shoe to fill. So thank you so much.
And you can always come back. Yeah. And just, this is from the staff as well. And I know Tom, this is a special creation of Tom. From Tom and from the rest of the staff and the board. So and flowers are for you as well. But it would be really nice if we wouldn't, wouldn't mind, can we get a picture with you?
Sure. Very quickly, if I could, Vice Chair, just say on behalf of the staff and the point of leadership, thanks for everything you've done for over 10 years now that you've been with us. And you've taken on just about every predicament we can go into with grace and smiling compliments. And it's always reassuring to say, the first words out of our mouth are, call Rose. And now we welcome working with a woman. We will call upon and the entire civil team at the county attorney's office. And so we wish you the best, but our paths will continue to cross. It's not goodbye, but see you soon.
Well, and if I can just say real quick, just what a privilege it's been working with all of you. And certainly getting to know you and Supervisor McGee as well for the last year and getting to know you better. Patrice, working with you in a different context. It's been fun and it's been interesting and definitely challenging. And you know, I take with me so much, just, you know, so much I've learned. And I, and I take all the relationships. I mean, that's, and I've said it several times that, you know, what I am so much going to miss are all the people, but I'm going to be in the community. I hope to be, you know, to do, you know, what I can as a, as a member of the community, as, as an attorney in private practice. And I really look forward to seeing the county, you know, proceed to do great work and seeing Avon grow in this position. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So Steve, I didn't mean to cut the staff off. If anybody else would like to say anything. I know that many of, many of you have worked with Rose for a long time. So if anybody would like to make any comments.
I just wanted to make a quick note of recap of departments. You have no idea how often the phrase call Rose comes out day to day. And you are always there. You are always prompted returning a call in that moment of desperation. And I can speak in for all of the departments. Thank you. We need to do. And you have always been just the most delightful, delightful cohort to work with, even in the toughest of times. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Lindsay, Lindsay, you should really.
I just want to say thank you so much, Rose. Especially when I transitioned into the clicks position and kind of felt like I was a deer in the headlights. And you answered many, many of my oh, call Rose texts, Rose, during the board meetings. You've always been there to answer questions for me and make sure that the board's on the right track with things that need to be done. And in moments where I felt panicked, you had the calm that I really needed to say, it's good, we're good. Let's see. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And Rose, I just wanted, I know we haven't worked together long, but it's been a pleasure working with you when I needed to lean on you or solicit your legal advice. It's been excellent. And I've really appreciated all the support that you've shown to Public Affairs during my tenure at the county. Certainly you have, will be very hard to replace, but we certainly look forward to working with your colleagues. And we hope you won't be a stranger. And so it's a, it's a, we're still a community and so we look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
All right, photo. Let's do a photo op and.
We have Kim that would like to make a comment virtually.
Oh.
We don't get to see anybody. Just listen.
The little square, right there on the screen. You can't see that. Can I unshare the PowerPoint from please?
There we go.
Kim, you are a good fellow.
Hi, hi, Rose. And hi, now I'm testing out the, you know, hybrid model of the meeting. So this is awesome. Great seeing you all there in person. Rose, I just wanted to take a minute, just, I have known Rose since she came to work at the county attorney's office. We worked together and Rose has been an amazing rock for me personally and a, and a good friend as well as a colleague. And I've just really appreciate you and going to miss you terribly, as I said to you before, but glad you're staying in the community. And again, just on behalf of all of HHS and all of us, as we have navigated the pandemic in particular and all of the crazy nuances of things that have gone on over the years, just really appreciate all of the work that you have done and your steady hand in leading us to always finding a, a good solution to our legal dilemmas. So thanks, Rose, and best to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody else? All right, now maybe a photograph.
Could we unwrap your present first?
Oh, yes, I can do that. I wasn't, I was not sure. Yes.
It's something just so embarrassing, you open a present.
Never understood why people enjoy baby showers and wet. That is awesome. That's, thank you so much. Great to work with you back. Thank you.
Ah, very nice. Hey, I found one of those in my office.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I think Miranda got one too.
Yeah.
So that's, that's yours.
Oh, it's mine.
Yeah, it's yours. And Tom can tell you the story of the wood.
Oh, Tom, thank you. I thought it was Miranda's.
No, sorry, Miranda.
All right, so let's get a photo. And it's kind of crowded to wrap it over.
In front of the maps?
Yeah, in front of the maps, legal maps.
Yes.
The legal maps so that we can do this.
Or.
So we're going to keep girls on one side, boys on the other.
Of course. Linda, can you squeeze a little bit?
I can get in.
This is actually from tallest to shortest. We can rearrange that.
I'm not sure.
I said short, in this context, no, in this context. All right.
All right, thank you all. Amazing, very much.
So before we share the screen, I'll, I'll use. Please, thanks. Madam Chair, I'll, I'll go after your prompt comments. I just want to make some introductory comments about the technology and all that work.
You know, this, even though it is a, a special session, does have a call to the public. Should we go through the call to the public at this point? So, and members of the public who may be with us today. As you know, it's our special session and we will be talking about board supervisors redistricting. However, now is the time for members of the public who may like to make a comment or bring matters to the board supervisors. Now is the time for you to do so. This is the time for you to address the board on matters that are not on the agenda. And this is a hybrid meeting. And so Lindsay is going to tell you how you can do that. Please remember your comments are limited to three minutes. Because it is a call to the public and not on the agenda, this is not a time nor can the board engage in discussion with you on this item. It could be placed at a later board meeting for discussion if necessary. We ask that you remain respectful and that you keep your comments to three minutes. So with that, Lindsay, would you mind letting members of the public know how they can address us?
Thank you, Chair Horseman. If you would like to make a comment at this time, you're going to scroll down to the bottom of your screen. It's virtual and hover and there's a raise hand icon that looks like a hand and you will click on that. That will raise your hand to notify us that you would like to speak. If you have joined by phone, you can hit star nine and that will raise your hand to notify us that you'd like to speak.
All right, we'll give you a few minutes. See if there's anyone who would like to address the board. Lindsay, do we have anyone out there?
At this time, we do not have any hands raised.
All right, one more time. This is the time for call to the public. Members of the public, if you'd like to address the board, please do so at this time.
There are no hands raised.
Very good. Then we are going to proceed on with our special session of board supervisors and with that county manager.
Sure. Madam Chair, members of the board, just wanted to make a few comments about all of us coming back together again. And so we're all kind of getting used to being in the same room together. Some important things to note is I want to, we want to do a special shout out to IT and facilities. So IT has been, have been crazily attempting to install the technology that we'll be using in the future. So the technology that you see around us basically are all the monitors, the laptops in front of you. All those are part of an integrated system that will provide the county an opportunity to broadcast meetings virtually as well as help in person. So the hybrid, if you will. And so it's going to take some getting used to. The laptops will be part of your basically important tool that you'll have in front of you at all board meetings. Doesn't exclude you from creating all, anything else that you would like to. Another thing with regard to the monitors is that whatever we're projecting on the monitors, not today, since there's a major case of technology that was not, that actually is on order, did not allow us to do so today. But when we are presenting and the presenters are presenting during the board meeting and they, they refer to an exhibit, they'll be, they'll be broadcast to all the monitors. So they'll be very easily seen, as well as the public being able to see that as well. So the technology is important. The spacing, you'll see the first splits you all up in terms of up to down. The order of the rotation in terms of who's up and who's down is up to you all. But it does provide, it does provide for the distancing and we have the Plexiglas dividers. We are still in a pandemic. We are still in a health emergency. At the same time, we're attempting to balance the need for the board to come together as a body to enact the people's business. And so being able to navigate with this kind of hybrid approach in terms of what you see today is what we'll continue to do. We do have planning in place for some longer term improvements to the, to the chambers. But in the meantime, this is what the arrangement will be. Again, I want to, as I said, give our thanks to our IT team and our facilities management team for putting this, this together. Also to our GIS team for being here today. They have helped us throughout the entire GIS process of every districting. So I don't know if I missed any points. We're good to go. So Madam Chair, with that, I will ask staff to share the screen and I will walk through a PowerPoint. You each have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you, but you'll also be able to see in the screen in front of you what, what we're showing to the public. So your laptops show the same.
And Mr. County Manager, as you and I were talking about this morning, I think it would be very good to, at this point in our meeting, go ahead and have the county manager facilitate the meeting and give us a little flexibility for all of us board members then to be able to engage in discussion on this. So thank you, Mr. County Manager.
Yes, I will, I will facilitate. So first slide, of course, Coconino County Redistricting for 2022. This is my fourth cycle in a re-ty, in redistricting. Some have had other, other experiences. So fourth time around in terms of providing, facilitating discussion to the board. And so please move to the next slide, please. So redistricting 2022, we wrapped up a, a few weeks ago, in fact, redistricting efforts that we had put forward related to congressional and legislative. And now we are looking at our county redistricting. And what you see in front of you on this slide is our current county district map. And you can see that the districts are delineated. And so that, of the next slide, please. Our agenda for today, I'll provide a couple of slides of redistricting backgrounds, chronology information and legal framework. Legal framework is important as, as the board proceeds with the process of identifying and eventually creating the maps that will be used for the next 10 years. Again, it's every 10 year process. Next, we'll be looking at the mapping guidelines that were adopted by the board in 2021. Then we will be going through a review of the mapping scenarios. We have six scenarios that staff have developed for board consideration and discussion. And then from there, questions and discussions on scenarios and then finally board direction, action, forward mapping scenarios for public comment. If you want to make comment though, that the six that you see today are only six for board consideration today. Any discussion in terms of additional scenarios or additional mapping you would like us to, to, to engage in, that of course will be board direction to the staff to go through. Again, the six scenarios are just a starting point and, and based on, of course, your input as well as that we receive from the public, that will go into, you know, the evolving maps from the process. Next slide, please. So county redistricting, board supervisors are responsible for creating super territorial districts for semantic guidelines established by state and federal law. In addition to the, about the board supervisors, the Coconino County Community College District also shares the same five districts. And I know, I believe, connected as a participant, today is Dr. Colin Smith, President of Coconino Community College. And so we send our best to, to Dr. Smith. But again, the college district follows the same boundary districts as the Coconino County Board. The 2020 population for Coconino County was 125,101. And doing the math, dividing that by five, the target population is 29,020 is of course the target population. At the same time, we have the legal parameters of adjusting those five percent plus or five percent below. You see the target range is a maximum population of 30,471 and the minimum population of 27,561. A little bit of chronology, earlier this year, September, after several delays, the map, the census data was released. And the census, the annual census for this decade was delayed due to COVID. And that caused, of course, associated delays in getting the data out to, to local governments as well as states that they could be using for redistricting. In September, around September 2021, the board adjusted precinct boundaries to streamline the administration of election for 2022 based on legal requirements and IRS, Arizona law statutes. And this had to be completed before October 1st of 2021. And so you'll recall in October, leading, I think it was right up to almost October 1st, the county recorder and elections director brought to the board several changes that were being recommended only to ease the administration of the election process. So that took place in October. At the same time, the independent redistricting commission for the state of Arizona was, was ramping up their process. And their process was to do what we're doing here today, however, at the congressional and legislative level. And so from October through December 2021, the county intentionally paused our redistricting activities so that the IRC could complete their work because of the changes that they would be making at congressional legislative mapping level. Those changes would then impact county maps as well. So that took place October through 2021, December. In January of 2022, we resumed our redistricting as we're doing today with reviewing the scenarios because the IRC process did, did get completed back in last month, February. And so those, those boundaries have been adjusted, those precincts have been adjusted, taken into consideration of the independent redistricting work. During March 2022, the county will embark on a series of virtual public hearings to gain input on mapping scenarios that the board will, will be considering for the public hearing process. And then the process, we are scheduled to conclude on April 12th, when the board adopts the county maps again, which will also be utilized by Coconino Community College as well. Next slide. A little bit of background, of course, as I indicated, redistricting process is every 10 years. Census data, and we already created a little bit of this, is used by states to create legislative congressional districts. Counties also utilize county level data to create redistricting plans that comply with constitutional and federal mandates. And I also indicated that the same process applies to the Coconino Community College districts as well. State law, Arizona law statutes to 12, you can see here, the board shall meet at the county seat. And I did highlight the date of, the date of December 1st. That was changed this year because of COVID. And the state legislature has amended that date to, I think, later in 2022. July of 2022 is the new date by which our process needs to be concluded. But if we had not had COVID by December 20, by December 1st, we would have gone through the redistricting process following the release of the census data, dividing the county into, in our case, by districts. And then of course numbering, and you can see the rest of it here. So that process is guided by state law. Next slide, please. At the same time, we also must abide by federal law. So one person, one vote, and you'll see the language here, equal protection clause demands no less than substantially equal state legislative representation for all citizens, all places, as well as all races. By holding that a federal constitutional requisite, in this case, both houses of the state legislature must be apportioned on a population basis, meaning that the equal protection clause requires that a state make an honest and good faith effort to construct districts, in this case, both houses of the legislature, as nearly, as nearly equal populations practical. Same applies for states, for counties as we do the same work for apportioning population for super territorial districts. Next slide. We're also guided by the Voting Rights Act of 1965. A couple of sections I want to highlight. Section five was enacted to freeze changes in election practices in covered jurisdictions until the proposed changes were determined to have neither discriminatory purpose or effect. Arizona and Coconino County was a covered district jurisdiction. However, in 2013, Shelby County legislation, litigation rather, led to the US Supreme Court ruling that the criteria for determining, criterion for determining covered jurisdictions was unconstitutional. So prior to that, when we would be submitting our plan to the feds, we would go through the process. And I have, this is the one where we submitted in January of 2002, was our redistricting plan. And it had data, election returns, maps. We also had to document our. Uh we also had to document our public information process by which we went through in order to make sure that the public was well informed of the work we were doing. All of this was submitted to the Department of Justice. They would then take weeks to pre-clear it. At the same time, over here on the election side, we're waiting for pre-clearance in order to hit the print button on ballots and everything that had to take place here. And there were times when we were actually up against our deadline because DOJ had not pre-cleared uh the, the changes. And so, pre-clearance under section five is no longer part of the process. However, we can go to the next slide. Section two is, so section two of the Voting Rights Act, no voting qualification or prerequisites for voting or standard practice or procedure shall be imposed or, or applied by any state or political subdivision and counties or political subdivisions of the state to deny or bridge the right of any citizen of the United States to vote on account of race or color. Again, section two applies to uh the state as well as the county. So, uh I want to raise this, and while I'm not an attorney, I'm not providing legal advice, we have to always abide by the fact that we are still under uh the Voting Rights Act uh for section two. And so any changes or any work that we would be doing, that the board would be adopting, um, is still, uh depending on the outcome of it, uh potentially something that someone could take issue uh and, and file a legal challenge to. So again, we want to make sure that this is covered very closely. Next slide, please. So guidelines for redistricting. This is the important part of the county's work. When we're creating any work or any changes to our districts, we are taking into account these guidelines which were adopted by the board um in, in twenty twenty-one. These were the same guidelines that were adopted in twenty eleven. Uh and I say that because guidelines that were adopted in twenty eleven were pre-cleared by the Department of Justice. And so we've not made any changes. And so we're going to, as an assumption, that nothing has changed with regard to how DOJ, Department of Justice, would be viewing these guidelines at this point in time. And I'm going to read them. This is very important in terms of the board. Number one, draw districts of equal population based on census data to ensure one person, one vote. A deviation from that standard by five percent is permitted, in up or down, but less deviations down. And so as much as close as we can get to the target population. The next, do not dilute the voting strength of racial and language minority groups. Preserve the ability of majority minority districts to elect representatives of their choice. When considering the ability of districts to, to elect minority representatives, voting age population should be considered rather than just census population numbers. And we have provided to you the VAP or the voting age population to you as well. Number three, preserve communities of interest. Communities of interest, um, you know, they can be as micro as a neighborhood or as macro as a forest, or, you know, a, a watershed, you name it. And so, communities of interest uh span a lot of different types of communities of interest here. Next, districts must be compact and contiguous. Use census block boundaries as district boundaries and do not split voting precincts. That's a really important piece because we have always done that. Um, number one, we didn't have the technology ten, twenty, and definitely not thirty years ago to split um uh blocks as, as much as we do now with, with technology. And I recall the first time we did this in nineteen ninety-one, we had the huge maps from the census bureau and wall-sized maps and, and notebooks of the bound of the block level. We would go through and just write, you know, what could be uh something that was as easy as, as Nathan Mark did. And so, uh it is not something to do. Again, we've not uh taken uh the tact of, of splitting any voting precincts. However, there have been some splits that were created um as a result of the independent redistricting process. Next, maintain traditional geographic and political boundaries. That's self-explanatory. Six, do not create a substantial long-term negative effect on a specific political party. Political parties should have their chance to influence the political process. Next, base the new plan on, on existing districts to the extent possible. And then, uh, eight, when drawing district boundaries, take into account current incumbents. Again, for incumbents. Manager, chair members of the board, this is a very important slide. This, this is, th- these are the guidelines by which scenarios um ought to be based on. So the work necessary would be cute. Next slide. So scheduled sessions and outreach in general. So, again, members of the public may submit input on draft maps. Uh we put until April twelfth, which is twenty twenty-two, which is the day the board will be adopting. Uh comments can be submitted to redistricting@coconino.az.gov. And then also, county residents are also encouraged to attend and provide input at the following virtual public information sessions via Zoom. And you see them listed here, working with public affairs uh to get the word out so that we can encourage maximum participation uh in our redistricting efforts uh for these four dates. Next slide, please. We have a website. So website is at coconino.az.gov slash redistricting. The website, and I've circled it in red, um has information on what is redistricting, the impacts, why are changes needed. The scenario, so the six scenarios that you're seeing today have been posted to the public webs, to the public website. We've also included, uh when this was active, the state of Arizona redistricting. So the IRC work, uh we were also posting information based on that because it has an impact on the county's work as well. The timeline, the public input process, FAQs. Uh we've also added county election resources and the links to, and link to the county election site and in contact. Again, this is an important piece. We encourage the public. And so you can see here, we have an image of the map, the timeline. We're also included on the scenario on, in, in the website itself, the ability for the public to print out uh the maps that you see in front of you here that, that are not shaded, uh so that they too could, could take it, take a whack at maybe creating um some of their thoughts on the draft map as well. Next slide. So we'll stop there to ask, uh, Mr. Manager, if we're posing any questions before we do the last slide.
The, the only comment I would make, again, is this has been a tremendous amount of work, not only for the, uh, your staff, Steve, but also GIS. And I just want to thank every single one of the individuals who have been involved in this process. It has been, you know, quite frankly, uh as big and as, and certainly more transparent uh than what we even had with the uh, uh, redistricting IRC. So, uh I want to thank everybody for their very hard work by doing this. This is difficult. It's hard. It's a hard decision. Uh it affects us as board members and our communities very directly. And we really appreciate all of your help on this. So, thank you so much.
Um also, Madam Chair, you'll see in the room here, we have maps on phone boards. And so, um, we did have this produced uh earlier today. Uh we will be putting these on easels inside the lobby here at the admin building for individuals from the public that would like to come in and cruise through them. They're also available if any of us at the staff level are out of that, as well as the board, uh through your, through your travels. And you would like to take maps with you to just show low-tech, phone board and paper. Uh but sometimes low-tech works almost better than the high-tech. And so, I've been able to do that, though. That's why the maps are here. Uh, so Madam Chair, I'll go to the final slide here.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh Steve, um, you know, and so is it, you know, our intent obviously is to go out to the public with uh the maps, uh, you know, after, I guess, today, uh some people consume. And they've had the opportunity potentially on the uh website to look at them. Uh what features do we have on the website that people can use associated? Is it observation? Is there a comment? What, how is it set up?
Both. You're, you'll, you'll be able to, to scroll through the different scenarios or whatever scenarios that, that the board uh wish to make uh going forward. At least at this point in time, the public can go on, look at the, the electronic version, also see the population. So basically, what you're seeing is what the public can see. Uh if they have comments on, on any of the maps, they could submit, submit comments uh online as well to the, to the email address. And so.
That, that's in addition to the public meetings where they can make comments.
And that's.
And which is important for everybody to know.
And the public website has been open for several months.
So we have, have we gotten a series of comments or?
Um, we have had, most of the comments uh were related to when, when, when is the process going to start?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yes, Professor Fowler.
Yes, uh Steve, uh after today, uh I'll be able to take these to the public and do um presentations. We have the Western Agency Council meeting coming up.
We are, Madam Chair, Supervisor Fowler, these, these maps are available for that. Um, we should probably, though, confirm uh the efforts of the public outreach. Right now, we have four Zoom sessions scheduled. Um, so the board probably should have some discussion on, um, on if that's the, the tact that they would like to take. But we can still, of course, at board member directions, go out to attend um any of the opportunities that you have for.
Vice Chair, Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. Um, County Manager, a question. Uh if the numbers, the COVID numbers permit, is there a plan to provide any in-person public forums before April twelfth?
We can, so we can do that. Um, I would say based on, um, yes, uh I would just want to look at um how we do that within each of the districts because the districts, the number of sessions that we do in each of the districts should be also comparable in, in frequency, we, frequency now.
Unless, uh, Mr. County Manager, if, in fact, we try to have maybe one big meeting in public somewhere, you know, in a central location. Um, I know that that's hard because we're like the second largest county in the country. Um, but, but it's going to get really tight on time is what my, my concerns are. So.
So, so we can, we can look at.
Yeah.
Any of those options.
Yeah, I only ask because I've had questions from the community already about the possibility of public forums. So I just want to make sure we address it. Thank you.
And, Mr. Um, uh, Mr. County Manager, I do have a question that came up at our board meeting yesterday about the possibility of having these um meetings. And, and quite frankly, I, I agree with Supervisor Ryan that an hour is probably enough for these public meetings, especially since we're having four of them. Um, to, given, given the uh IRC folks that showed up, I'm not sure we'll even get as many interests for our VO, our board supervisors, redistricting. Having said that, there was a comment that was made that, that happened, but was going to be used for another purpose, to solicit information. And, and I, I think maybe that's not going to be the case. Okay.
We, yeah, and we will, will not do that. We were initially looking at taking the opportunity to, to deal with two issues. And so, but, um, I think both are important in and of themselves that we can split up the outreach and the public participation for redistricting as well as the input of the county uh health.
Very good. Thank you. Yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so Steve, um, let's see. I had three questions and I'm starting to lose them. Oh my gosh, how's that happen? It's not happening, right? Um, let's see. Um, these are listening sessions, you know, once we launch the map, they're listening sessions. And then we come back. And the Tuesday meeting, is that the, our final meeting? Or what is the uh Tuesday, the March twenty ninth? Or what, you, you may have had another calendar that.
You don't have to refer to staff. I don't have a calendar in front of me. But the, the, let's kind of go to April twelfth and work backwards. So April twelfth is the date by which we're recommending the adoption of the maps in place. And backing track from that.
Okay.
We can certainly.
So these meetings that are being proposed, they're listening sessions. Our opportunity here, the public going on maps, we have available.
Correct. And, and if I could, Madam Chair, uh compare the experience with the independent redistricting commission where the commissioners were in in, in attendance uh to listen to the public on the maps and, and then to also to, um, to, of course, we would do it anyways as a public body, we would do it as a public, but to, to, to be able to listen in on the deliberations.
So. All right. Okay. So it's the April twelfth, did you say?
Yes.
April twelfth. So that's the decision point. Uh, maps come back. Do we go with it? There we go, et cetera. That's our discussion conclude and, and uh, uh, launch the, uh, the new districts.
If I could add to that, Mr. Chair, Ms. Madam Chair, Supervisor Ryan. Um, while the, while the legal deadline date is later in, in, in summer, um, because we are, been gearing up for the May election, while this, these, these changes will not have an impact on the May election or the twenty-two election, this is, these are good for, this will be for twenty-four. One of the things that we need to get ready for is the election. So our staff kind of plays total duty. And so we want to wrap up redistricting so that we can now turn our efforts on to election and our elections director, our county recorder, all of us are changing gears and, and, um, and so that's why we're, we're hoping we're, we're recommending the redistricting process.
Yeah, just, you know, continuing with my comments, would be absolutely sooner than later. Uh, it's been going on for a while. Anyway, people keep asking uh on, on what's going on. So, uh, you know, that's the desired intent. And then, um, the question would be, uh, as of the twelfth, say we take action, we decide on maps. Uh, when, um, at that point, is it that date? Or do we have another date that they are uh firmed up as the, the current maps?
So, so the maps that we're approving that the board is considering this for this cycle will actually be going into, how do I say this? It's probably easier to say the current mapping configuration is being used for twenty-two.
Yeah, our existing districts stay until the next general election. Yeah.
And then, and then the redistricting maps that we're approving in April will actually kick in uh for the, for the next election cycle. Okay. I wanted to pause with that, just to.
That's, that's really unusual because usually we will have had them done by December thirty-first, which initiates the new maps.
Yeah.
So we have a four-year cycle that we have a new piece on the.
And again, I think it was the delay of COVID and the, and the state redistricting process that kicked the, all of the cycles off for them.
So, could we get that firmed up, though, from a journal?
I'll ask the elections to, to confirm that. But that was our confirmation and discussion with the county recorder uh who was also in conduct in discussions with the state elections director. So.
I swear, as, as raised as.
Madam Chair, uh, the red rank, like the, there are other counties in the state that are in the same predicament because of this. There are other towns in the state that are in the same predicament as, as us. Uh, the American, but currently have this supervisor list for that is up for election. And they're keeping the twenty, like the existing boundaries of their districts that we are for the twenty twenty-two election cycle. And these ma- maps will be effective for, like, starting in twenty twenty-three or the twenty-four uh election cycle. The general, like the next general election. And that delay was caused because of the uh redistricting process and census data being delayed by half a year. So that involved the whole calendar. But would then usually line up uh with, with the correct elections.
Okay, I, I hear that. Uh, it's just, it's weird. It's almost like we're, you know, it, it's a four-year loss, so to speak, uh from a representative perspective, uh associated with.
So. Now, I'm confused. So where are these maps? So today, all we're getting is these are some scenarios that we came up with. And then April sixth, that we're gonna let this be today, the maps that are shown. April sixth, we will decide based on these maps what to take to the public. You know, we're doing that now. Today, we're gonna decide. I don't know how many, all these maps, which ones are gonna go to the public. And then on April sixth, we're gonna decide which map is going, we're going to choose.
April twelfth.
I mean, April twelfth, yes. And then that map that we choose doesn't go into effect until two thousand twenty-four.
Correct. But you'll actually be using the 23 for purposes of signature.
Yeah, we're signature gathering. Yes, we'll be using that. But until, but until 2024 election, which is the next election, we're still using our own district maps within the current cycle that we're.
And so it's probably easier to look at in terms of election cycle. So for the 22 election cycle, we'll be using the current maps. After the general election in 22, the new maps that were adopted in 22 will be taken. So if you look at it in terms of election cycle, that's probably easier because.
But as, as county supervisors, though, we do not, it doesn't take effect. Or when we start working within those new districts boundaries, that's, I guess, that's a question I have.
The way I would look at it right now is if the, if these do not go into effect until the next general election, we continue to represent the people that elected us to our positions in the districts that elected us. So to me, that makes sense. I mean, this boundary or this district are the people who elected us and look at us as their representatives. We will continue to be their representative until, of course, the next general election. Yes.
But I heard two different things. I heard 22 and I'm hearing 24. And, 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 and that's.
They have two different purposes though. So the election cycle and then representation. So I think those are the two, two issues. And, and I think what I want to do is we'll confer with, with attorneys on that. Because the election cycle is more clearly, again, for the election cycle, we have a process in place. But in terms of representation, I mean, I'm not going to answer because I don't believe it's.
Rose, before you leave, you're here. I can hardly wait to hear from you.
Okay, all right. So yes, this is something that we have discussed and addressed and just something we have conferred with some of our fellow counties over. And Chairwoman, as you phrased it, that at least in part was one of the reasons in addition to the delays and just the fact of, you know, what we have right now, especially with one district up for election in 2022, we have signature gathering going on right now. And so there's certainly the challenge of how to handle if we're changing boundaries within that signature collection. I'm with signature collectors, then not actually being within the district for voting. So the, the plan, and it is something legally sound that we have reviewed, was that given that the 2022 election is a continuation of the 2020 term. It's not a new term for that district. It makes sense that the 2020 voters will also be voting in the 2022 election. So the purpose was to maintain the boundaries from 2020 in the 2022 election. And I certainly understand, you know, your perspective, even though you, you know, your districts aren't up for election, you've still got to figure out who, who are my constituents. And so yes, for the time being, that will continue to be those who elected you in, for the 2022.
But that's 2022 for 2021 as well.
It, it's for, it's for this term, our four-year term.
Right. So the 2020 through the 2024 term.
Which isn't typical.
No, I.
And, 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 yeah. Yeah, it's, because of the delay in the redistricting process, we would have been wrapping this up actually in December. Under ARS 212, we were, we just would have been wrapped up last month.
Yeah, I understand the, the logic associated with it. It's just we're conditioned to, hey, we have a new, things change and you have a new constituency.
You know, occasionally the law is logical.
Can we repeat everything again?
Yes, what she said. So the 2022 process that we're working on.
I understand. Thank you.
It's a, it's a new one because we've never had this before.
No.
We would have been switching neighborhoods and we would have been, we would have been, you know.
And they never could be.
Supervisor Vasquez.
So in essence, what we're saying is that these new boundaries won't really take into effect until 2025. Because the election, you have to go through that process, go through the election and then won't actually go into effect January 1st, 2025. Is that accurate?
Yes, but for signatures. So when you are, when you are after 2022, in other words, in the general election, when you are, any of us campaigning, we will be campaigning based on the new boundaries with the new boundary area as our constituent.
So do you still represent the same voter?
And that, that's why it's always easy to look at it in terms of the election cycle. The election cycle starts months before and ends with the general election. So, but their representation of whoever that, whoever the successful person is, their representation begins in January 1st.
Sue, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note that if we need additional resources and comment, we have reported adding. And it's also on Zoom.
I was gonna ask.
And be called, should she be?
Very good. Thank you for that. I, I think it's as clear, oh, it's still on, where it's as clear as my, I can perceive.
Right.
I got it.
So let me just cover my last slide. So guidelines for the discussion today, a reminder that this is a board supervisor's work study session. It is an opportunity for the board to have a joint public discussion about proposed redistricting scenarios that will be offered to the public for comment. Each of the scenarios meets predetermined guidelines as adopted by the board. Again, that's a staff observation. It is ultimately the board that decides if scenarios meet the guidelines. I will serve as the facilitator to base of the chair may freely participate in the discussion as a board member. It's hard to chair a meeting and also discuss district business at the same time. Also, each of the scenarios have, that will be, that we're providing today have been developed by the staff. We will introduce and explain their starting points, where the board wishes to go as a collective body is the board's prerogative on that. After all the scenarios have been introduced and explained, we'll ask questions. This is for the board, the discussion turns back to the board for their discussion deliberation. Board members, if needed, we will certainly offer, will do anything in terms of the board's desire regarding scenarios. And so the board members may request staff develop additional scenarios that goes without saying. This is your process and this is, this is the time where you will be directing staff on what things you would like to see, if you, if anything you would like to see highlighted. When the, when the, when a revision or the revision or addition is completed as requested, revised or additional scenario will be reviewed again, the board will review it against guidelines. If revised or additional scenario does not follow the guidelines, the board may not consider this scenario. It's kind of common sense. And then finally, when the board has other questions or any of the stairs may, other predetermined guidelines and no additional scenarios proposed, the board may proceed to vote forward any of the scenarios or others to the public for, for the public.
And, and Mr. County Manager, I think it's important to say, not only is there obviously legal criteria that needs to be met and obviously if we do not meet our legal criteria, if we do not follow our stated guidelines, it's of course, it's always up, up to legal challenge. And there's a second part, and that is that we want to make sure that our process is open and transparent. And I think that's why the county has gone that extra mile and make sure that we are accomplishing exactly that with these hearings and meetings. But also they want to make sure that we are basically above board and that we are acting in the best interest of the full county. And I know there was some criticism with the IRC on the divisions that were made. And, and certainly for us, we want to make sure we meet legal mandates as well as that we meet the expectations and the high standards that our communities have placed on us in proceeding in this. So, thank you.
Um, Margot, you can. So Madam Chair, other questions or comments? Because the plan now or process now is that I'll walk through each of the six scenarios. It's gonna take a little bit of time, not too much longer. We'll walk through the scenarios and identify from the current map, what are the changes? So just an example, you know, when we look at the first scenario and we'll project a scenario in a moment, I'll be saying under scenario A, the first change would be flag stat eight currently in District 1 would go to District 2. And I'll just go down the list and we'll go right by scenario. And then when I'm completed, this will be a question back to Madam Chair. Do you want to discuss each scenario after each scenario has been presented? Or do you want me to proceed through the six scenarios and then come back with board two to vote?
Well, I'll, here for my colleagues, I'm at, my preference would be to go through all six. So I, I know you've individually and we've gone through the six with GIS, but this is our very first time as a board to be able to discuss this. But myself, I think it'd make more sense to go through all six and then open that up for some discussion. Any comments on that or is everybody okay with that?
I'm, I'm good with all six.
Sounds good.
Okay, so let's project scenario B. Just a second.
Yeah, I, I did at the beginning, but I'll, I'll do it again. Just, we, you, you probably noticed we are unfortunately missing one of our board members. And we've all really tried to make this board meeting and to be here in person. Just before the board meeting, Supervisor Gay received a call that her sister was brought into FMC. So she's up at FMC with her sister. Depending on how that goes, she might be able to join us later on this afternoon. So thank you.
So this first scenario is scenario A, and we're gonna start with the flag stat precincts. So we're gonna be zooming in so that you're able to see the numbers. And then you're able to see your laptops in front of you might be useful to look at. What we're projecting on the laptops is also is being streamed to the public. Scenario A, first proposed change for flag stat eight, recent flag stat eight goes from District 1 to District 2. And it's gonna be kind of all the first. The next change, flag stat 17 goes from District 2 to District 4.
You want to do all the change? I think it might make sense in scenario A to do all the changes by district?
Um, that's what I'm doing right now.
Okay, so District 1, want to do all the changes in District 1. Okay.
So again, the first and actually the only change in District 1 under scenario A was the corruption of this flag stat eight.
And that, that's not true. That's something different than what I thought. I've got District 1 would be have a suit by 60.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm starting from the flag stat precincts.
So you are gonna do it by district? I, I guess what I'm saying is if we make the changes by district, yeah, okay. And I took my mask off, Trey. Hopefully people can hear me if I don't. Okay.
So what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is go through each of the scenarios and go through precinct changes. And you're right, it's not gonna be by district. I mean, it'll be, it'll, it'll all. I'll, we'll do, staff will do, it's prepared to do whatever is requested.
It just makes sense to do it by district because then we know, I, I mean.
Do we have?
I, I wrote it down by district.
Yes, so do we have a, a district specific?
We're checking our manager.
Yeah, one second. We may have that.
Our, Madam Chair, our, our materials are by precinct.
I can. I wrote it down by district just so we could see actually the district map. We've seen all six.
I, I don't know. You tell me which one. Uh, we don't have the, the material collated by district.
It's just gonna be easier when we look at the map, if you do it by district. You know, District 1, 2, 3 per scenario. And I, I did write it down. I, Steve, I just gave it to them if you want.
Okay.
So.
Oh, is that? Okay. Then we'll follow that. So if you can just take a moment, we'll get the copies down.
Sorry.
We'll follow that. Madam Chair, do you want to take a quick break?
Sure, that sounds like, that sounds like.
If everyone is aware, the streaming is still on.
My mic is still active. My mic is still active.
But I process by recent, so, but, it's okay.
We have both ways now.
You know, he's, he's just strange.
So, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you. So when I worked at Genentech, we used to, you know, scope out systems, publish systems. And I did Genecom, the making partner, hey, brilliant guy. He'd go and he'd scope it out, and he'd do it completely in opposite way.
Isn't that weird?
And we would conclude it the same way. So if I say we're doing it in English, you know.
Are these yours?
Yeah.
People do process.
Nina, there was a second book on your thing, do you know, have a little? I'm just gonna break down right into it.
All the time.
Okay.
Yeah, they made, uh, a bunch that were put there.
You can take Judy's.
Not anymore.
And then she'll switch out Judy's if she, um, when she, the first.
Okay, uh.
I know.
Yeah, where did you get your bigger maps?
I've actually read for you some, uh. I mean, yeah.
I think that was kind of little ones, so it won't sort of then.
They should make one now. Oh, they're bigger than, oh, bigger than that, okay. Let me make a pop. It looks like big ones.
Thank you, Steve.
You bet. What are the others? I got one you get. Not working.
A.
This would save me a lot of time now.
So that's a feature.
Let's get over to bring some water bottles.
My manager, we ready? And, uh, thank you so much for breaking it down by district. I think it's gonna be easier for us, so thank you for the time on that.
So, uh, Madam Chair, we have resorted a chart, and we've distributed it to everybody. We will post the chart to the website as well.
Okay.
To orient you on the chart, um, you see the precinct number, the name, existing districts, and then scenario A through F. And then what's important is the ledger to the right. So the legend to the right shows that, you know, if it's gray, there's no change. Uh, we have a range and boundary changes, and so those, some of those boundaries probably were taking place because of the election administration. We have some splits, and we see the splits in blue. Splits occurred because of an IRC legislative or congressional line that split that precinct. Uh, we have a couple, in a few, maybe just a couple, uh, merge. So that's an important one, but again, it's very, it's not very, happened very much. And then a rename or a renumber. So again, you'll see the legends there. So I want you all to help me, though, if I miss something. So I'm gonna start again, and we're gonna be covering districts. And so the first change in this, in District A, comes at flag eight, where it is currently in District One, is reflected in Scenario B to be in District Two. Next change, sixty, have a supi. Currently in District One, under Scenario A, proposed to District Eight, uh, would be from District Five, right? So have a supi, District One to District Five in Scenario A. The next two, ranches north and ranches south. Originally, there was just ranches, and so because of a ledge line or congressional line, we had to do the split. Under Scenario A, both sides of the ranches north and south go from District One to District Three.
Can you go back to the half a supi? You just mentioned District Five.
Yes, so have, under, under Scenario A, have a supi would go from District One to District Five. That's under Scenario A.
What number is that?
Sixty.
I don't have a sixty. Can I show you? So, what we're doing is, yeah, it's, it's Scenario A, and it's right up here, it's District One. So. Yeah. So they broke down the precincts by districts.
Thank you.
So again, uh, the precincts, District. In District One, the changes were flag eight, sixty, eighty-one, and eighty-four. And that's under Scenario A. For District Two, under Scenario A, the changes are flag seventeen from District Two to District Four, eighteen from District Two to District Four, fifty-two Fernwood from District Two to District Five. Those are the only changes for District Two for Scenario A. Again, flag seventeen, flag eighteen, and Fernwood.
Except you're gonna add to District Two on Scenario A.
Yes.
Yes.
Number eight, yeah.
Yes, so, so subtracting, you subtracted Fernwood fifty-one to five, flag seventeen to four. What was the other one?
Eighteen to four.
Thank you. And then there's some adding, some precincts to District Two in Scenario A. Flag twenty-three.
Madam Chair, we would begin with Precinct Eight, goes to District Two in Scenario A. Precinct twenty-three goes to District Two in Scenario A. Precinct forty-one goes to District Two in Scenario A. Precinct fifty-three goes to District Two in Scenario A. Precinct sixty-three goes to District Two in Scenario A, and that is the last add to District Two in Scenario A.
So adding sixty-three, forty, uh, fifty-three, forty-one, twenty-three, and eight.
Madam Chair, I'll go one more time there.
Okay.
Hard for me to follow that way. Adding, uh, Precinct Eight, Precinct twenty-three, Precinct forty-one, Precinct fifty-three, Precinct sixty-three. That is the last add.
Thank you.
Okay. District Three. Let me follow your step. So District Three, uh, Precinct twenty-three goes from District Three to District Two.
Uh, no, actually, you, you, uh. The ranches?
Right.
Isn't that?
The remu.
Ranches eighty-four and eighty-one.
Eighty-four is sort of a combination.
It is, that's, that's.
It's a Bama and South Ranches combination.
Eighty-one, eighty-four is the one that's been split for the new precincts.
Correct.
Yeah.
So any more in District Three?
Uh, yeah, actually, what is that, a little green island up there?
That's what happens.
What's the number?
Uh, actually, you can get us between ten and, oh, is that a continuation of eighty-one? That island there?
Maybe could you comment on that one? Yeah, it's, uh, Ranches North.
Yeah, so I'll tell you why. It's just a piece eighty-one that's kind of like an island.
It was part of all the census block or something.
It is, it's that city, uh, it's the debate where our guys tried to recommend a modification, but they stuck with that.
That's right. It was gerrymandered.
By the, uh, State Redistricting Commission.
By the, by the State Redistricting Commission.
Yeah, they did listen to our, uh.
They did not listen.
Betty Hanson's recommendations on precincts, but, okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, we have one out of, of line, and that is Precinct Ninety-Six. There are no changes, but I wanted to note that District Three, the Precinct Ninety-Six is in District Three. It does not change, but it is not in order in, on the, either.
Thank you.
That's how we're missing.
Ninety-six.
How we're missing.
Six, seven, three.
I thought it was a dish.
No, this, this, this is like, this is like math class, and this is just the most amazing math, math and puzzle class.
That's why you all have. Okay, so we're going on to District Four.
Yes.
Changes, uh, District Four for Scenario A. Forty-one Blue Ridge goes from District Four to District Two. Forty-three Cameron goes from District Four to District Five. Forest Lakes goes from District Four to District Two.
What number is Forest?
Forest Lakes is fifty-three.
Yeah, so obviously.
Fifty-three, yeah, Forest Lakes is fifty-three, goes from four to two. Sixty-three Mormon Lake goes from District Four to District Two. And then down further to sixty-one inscription, oh, excuse me, that's District Five.
No, it adds, it adds.
It adds, so under, under sixty-one inscription house goes from District Five to District Four. And then finally seventy-one Navajo Mountain, District Five to District Four.
Yes, is Precinct Seventeen, flag Precinct Seventeen in District Four in Scenario A.
That's correct, Madam Chair, District Seventeen, excuse me, Precinct Seventeen and Precinct Eighteen go to District Four in Scenario A. As well as Precinct Sixty-One inscription house.
Seventy-one.
Navajo and seventy-one, now, not, all are added to District Four.
Seventeen, sixty-one, seventy-one, and eighteen.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Any other questions for Four? Excuse me, District Four got four. Okay. District Five, Scenario A, sixty-one inscription house goes from five to four, and Navajo Mountain seventy-one goes from five to four. I don't believe there are any other changes.
There are some adds.
There's adds.
Will the adds, of course.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, you can do that.
Um, District, uh, Precinct Sixty goes to District Five in Scenario A. Precinct fifty-two Fernwood goes to District Five in Scenario A. Precinct forty-three Cameron goes to District Five in Scenario A. That is the total of the adds for District Five.
So that is Scenario A.
Sixty also says. Scenario B?
You forgot to have a cost.
That's in the budget costs. Okay. Scenario B, for, for District One, Flag Staff Eight goes from one to two. Flag Staff Ten goes from one to two. I don't see. Which one is it?
Um.
Ranches South.
For Precinct Eighty-four goes to District Three. Precinct Four goes to Eighty-four, Ranches South goes to District Three. That is the last removal from District One. And the adds for District One in Scenario B.
Can you go over those again?
So for District One in Scenario B, um, Flag Eight goes to District Two in Scenario B. Flag Ten goes from District One to District Two in Scenario B. Eighty-four Ranches South Precinct goes from District One to District Three in Scenario B.
Remember, that's, that's split, that's why that happened.
Congressional.
Yeah. Yeah.
And now we'll check for additions to District One in Scenario B.
Do we have any? Nope.
We have no additions in Scenario B to District One.
So, want to District Two for Scenario B. Flag Eight goes from two to four. Fifty-two Fernwood goes from two to five.
Is that fifty-one or fifty-two Fernwood?
Fifty-two. Fifty-two is Fernwood.
That's the last, I believe, of removals for District Two.
Okay, go and do the additions.
And on Scenario B, the additions are eighteen Flagstaff Precinct from District Two to District Four.
Although that's the subtraction, but the adds are, adds are Precinct Eight.
Sorry, I apologize to that. Madam Chair, Scenario B is. Sorry, I apologize for that. I'm here. Scenario B, additions to District Two are scenario, are Flagstaff eight to District Two, Flagstaff ten to District Two. And that is the last of the additions to District Two for the Scenario B.
On to District Three. Flag from District Three to District Four.
Don't believe there's any other subtractions for District Three. Additions for Scenario B to District Three include a precinct eighty-four Ranches South to District Three, forty-one Blue Ridge to District Three, fifty-three Forest Lakes to District Three, sixty-three Mormon Lake to District Three. That's the last addition to District Three.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, District Four for Scenario B. Forty-one Blue Ridge from District Four to District Three. Forty-three Cameron from District Four to District Five. Forty, excuse me, fifty-three Forest Lakes from District Four to District Three. Sixty-three Mormon Lake from District Four to District Three.
Additions on Scenario B to District Four begin with precinct twenty-three Flagstaff to District Four. That's the only addition, I apologize. That's eighteen. Additionally, precinct eighteen Flagstaff to District Four. Twenty-three Flagstaff and eighteen Flagstaff to District Four. That's all the additions.
Next, District Five. Scenario A. Sixty-one, excuse me, no.
Fifty-one?
Yes, fifty, are we, are we still at A? Yeah.
Yes.
Sixty-one inscription house goes from District Five to District Four.
Round B. Or B.
B.
Or, and Scenario B.
So there's no.
B.
No. Add Cameron forty-three.
Just on Scenario B.
Yeah.
And additions for District Five on Scenario B. We have fifty-two Fernwood to District Five. We have forty-three Cameron to District Five. That is the last of the addition for Scenario B to District Five.
Scenario C. Flagstaff eight from District One to District Two. Grand Canyon fifty-nine, District One to District Five. Ranches South eighty-four Ranches South from District One to District Three. Any additions?
Additions to District One in Scenario C. I'm ready. See, no additions.
Did you do, Ranches North, did you say that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forty-three.
Yeah, okay. I just.
District Two to Scenario C.
District Two, Scenario C. Flag seventeen from two to four. Eighteen from two to four.
Are you on, are we on District Two, subtractions?
That's correct.
Or Scenario C?
Yes.
Okay, so say that again.
Seventeen and eighteen from two to four. And then fifty-two Fernwood from two to five. And then additions.
Additions under Scenario C for District Two. Eight Flagstaff eight to District Two under Scenario C. Flagstaff twenty-three to District Two under Scenario C. Blue Ridge forty-one to District Two. Or Forest Lakes fifty-three to District Two. Long Lake sixty-three to District Two. That is all we did, the additions to District Two under Scenario C.
On to District Three, Scenario C. Twenty-three from three to two.
So hang on, seven, where are we?
Scenario C. From precinct twenty-three.
Three.
District Three.
Okay, nice.
Three from three to two.
The additions to District Three in Scenario C are Ranches South eighty-four to District Three. That is the only addition.
Four. On to District Four. Scenario C. Blue Ridge forty-one Blue Ridge from District Four to District Two. Forty-three Cameron from District Four to District Five. Fifty-three Forest Lakes from District Four to District Two. Sixty-three Mormon Lake, sixty-three from four to District Two.
Additions under Scenario C to District Four are Flagstaff seventeen to District Four, Flagstaff eighteen to District Four, inscription house sixty-one to District Four, and Navajo, Navajo Mountain seventy-one to District Four under Scenario C.
District Five, Scenario C. Sixty-one from five to four. Navajo Mountain from five to four.
How would you do that if one were just?
Sixty-one inscription house, five to four. Seventy-one Navajo Mountain, five to four.
Thank you.
Additions for District Five under Scenario C. Fifty-nine, Grand Canyon fifty-nine. Fernwood fifty-two to District Five. Cameron forty-three to District Five. That is all of the additions under Scenario C to District Five.
On to District District One, Scenario D. Flagstaff eight, District One to District Two. Flagstaff ten, District One to District Two. Additions.
There are no additions to District One in Scenario D.
Well, D, right?
Yes.
So. Did you? And you're going through which district?
We're on District One right now.
Okay. Okay, got it.
For District, for Scenario D. So on to District Two, Scenario C.
D.
D, sorry. Seventeen Flagstaff seventeen from two to four. Eighteen Flagstaff eighteen from two to four. And nineteen Flagstaff nineteen from two to four. additions.
Is that a subtraction on this, or Scenario D?
It is. So District Two to District Five under Scenario D, precinct fifty-two. So additions to District Two under Scenario D, Flagstaff eight, Flagstaff ten goes to District Two, Flagstaff twenty goes to District Two. That's the last addition to District Two for Scenario B.
District Three. Scenario D. Flagstaff twenty from District Three to District Two. That's all I have.
Positions for District Three in Scenario D. I apologize, it is District Three, correct?
Yes.
It is District Three. Additions for District Three in Scenario D are Mormon Lake six, precinct sixty-three. That is the only addition. Oh, I apologize, that's incorrect. Precinct Ranches South number eighty-four also goes to District Three. Mormon Lake sixty-three and eighty-four Ranches South to District Three.
That little split.
This really seems very complicated. Very complicated.
District Three has always been complicated.
District Four, Scenario D. Forty-three Cameron from four to five. Sixty-three Mormon Lake from four to three.
Scenario D, additions to District Four. Seventeen Flagstaff to District Four. Eighteen Flagstaff to District Four. Nineteen Flagstaff to District Four. That is all of the additions to District Four in Scenario D.
District Five. Scenario D. I don't see any
We do have a couple down the bottom. Sixty-one inscription house, District Five. I'm sorry, I was, I misread it. That was in Scenario C. I'm sorry.
Just adds.
Just adds. For Scenario D, additions for District Five include Fernwood precinct fifty-two to District Five. Cameron forty-three to District Five. That's the last addition to District Five in Scenario D. Scenario E.
So we're gonna start with E. Flagstaff ten District One to District Two under Scenario E. Fifty-nine Grand Canyon District One to District Five. Eighty-four Ranches South from one to District Three. Those.
additions under Scenario E.
And B. I'm sorry, E, I'm sorry. Now I'm, now I can't do.
Additions for District One under Scenario E. Flagstaff sixteen to District One. That's the only addition to District One under Scenario E.
District Two, Scenario E. Flagstaff sixteen from two to one. And Flagstaff eighteen from two to four. And then Fernwood from two to four.
Additions under Scenario E for District Two. Flagstaff ten to District Two. Flagstaff twenty-three to District Two. Blue Ridge forty-one to District Two. Forest Lakes fifty-three to District Two. Mormon Lake sixty-three to District Two. That's all of the additions to District Two in Scenario E.
Except this flag twenty-three, are there?
Yeah. Yes, Flagstaff twenty-three to District Two in Scenario E.
So what district were we on? Three?
We're on three.
Oh, sorry, I was just trying to get the rest. So District Three, Scenario E. Flagstaff twenty-three to it's always C. additions.
Additions Ranches South eighty-four to District Three under Scenario E. That's the only addition.
Ranches North, awesome, right? Eighty-one?
Eighty-one?
Eighty-four.
Right next to the, eighty-four is the south.
The south, and then it's north.
Yeah.
Eighty-one in the reviews of District Four.
Under the E. So the map, I'm looking at it. And you have, when this precinct. Ranches North goes from one. So that's, hey?
Precinct D, Ranches North goes from one to three under Scenario.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
North Ranches eighty-one. It's hard to see.
It's, Ranches is the string one because the legislature.
Yeah. Split it.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, please.
And this is District Three, right?
Yes.
And E. Eighty-one is.
On District One to District Three. Right?
For eighty-one.
Yes.
Okay. That is a correction to our document? If that is the case, can you show that on the map, maybe?
I'm.
It's got, I'm on screen. District One now.
So both South Ranches eighty-four and North Ranches eighty-one get added to District Three under Scenario E. Is that correct?
Making that correction, man.
Pretty, where is that on? What are you talking about?
This document that you're making.
Yes. Cause it was, it was.
Yeah, that's right.
The document is one.
Ranches North. It's just, it's currently in District One, but it should say on the District Three.
Scenario, we're on Scenario E.
Yes. So eighty-one Ranches North.
That should be in three.
Yes. It's not that many voters, so it's not gonna be big.
So that should be.
There it is.
District Three.
Yes.
So North and South are 3.
Right now, they're, right now, they're together.
So District.
They're right now.
On to District 4, Scenario T, is A. Forty-one Blue Ridge, from four to two. Forty-three Cameron. From four to five. Fifty-three Forest Lakes. From four to two. Sixty-three Mormon Lake, from four to two. additions.
additions, under Scenario E, for District 4. Flagstaff eighteen to District 4. Burnwood fifty-two to District 4. That is the last addition.
District 5, Scenario C. I see no.
Scenario.
E, E is B, sorry. E is A, no changes for District 5. Subtractions.
Scenario E, additions to District 5. Grand Canyon fifty-nine. Cameron forty-three to District 5. That's the last addition.
Okay. Last scenario, Scenario F. District 1. Flagstaff eight, from 1 to 2. Flagstaff ten, from 1 to 2. Ranches South. From 1 to 3.
It's eighty-one.
No, that's North.
Eighty-four. Eighty-four. Eighty-four.
To District 1 again?
To, to.
Okay.
From 1 to 3.
additions, under Scenario F. To District 1, there are no additions to District 1, under Scenario F.
District 2. Flagstaff eighteen. From two to four. Fifty-two Burnwood, from two to five.
additions to District 2, under Scenario F. Flagstaff eight to District 2. Flagstaff ten to District 2. That is all of the additions to District 2, under Scenario F.
District 3, Scenario F. Flagstaff twenty-three, from three to four.
additions to District 3, under Scenario F. Eighty-four Ranches South. Forty-one Precinct Blue Ridge, to District 3, under Scenario. Forest Lakes fifty-three, to District 3. Mormon Lake sixty-three, to District 3. That's the last addition, under Scenario F, District 3.
District 4, Scenario F. Forty-one Blue Ridge, from four to District 3. Forty-three Cameron, from District 4 to District 5. Fifty-three Forest Lakes, from District 4 to District 3. Six.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, from four to three.
additions to District 4, under Scenario F. Flagstaff eighteen. Flagstaff twenty-three. inscription house sixty-one. Navajo Mountain seventy-one, to District 4, under Scenario F.
District 5, Scenario F. inscription house from five to District 4. Navajo Mountain seventy-one, from District 5 to District 4.
additions to District 5, under Scenario F. Burnwood fifty-two. Cameron forty-three. That's the last addition to District 5, under Scenario F.
Madam Chair, please, explanation, scenario.
So I have, and I don't know if you can do this real quick, and I think we have it on there, but could you go through the? Scenarios with population numbers? Is that possible?
Vic, can you pull that up on here?
Then we have it all in one place.
We can do it by scenario.
Yeah, if I, you know, Scenario A, by District. Just also just did.
I'm streaming.
Thank you.
Expand the demographics for each scenario, or can we discuss them?
Thank you. All right, here we go.
So this is which scenario?
Scenario A.
So Scenario A. Is, you want to read them off, just so you know?
Want us to read them off, on, on what the total scenario is?
Yeah, exactly. And this is how, I mean, then I have it all in one place. Would you mind?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
So District 1, under Scenario A.
Yes.
The population would be thirty thousand two hundred and thirty-six. District 2, the population would be thirty thousand two hundred and eighty-five. District 3, the population would be twenty-nine thousand eighty-one. District 4, population would be twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. District 5, the population would be twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. Madam Chair, do you want to note that each of those falls within the target?
Thank you, yes, that would be great. And then for the numbers for Scenario B, by District.
Scenario B, by District. District 1 is twenty-eight thousand four hundred and five. District 2 is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-six. District 3 is thirty thousand thirty-two. District 4 is twenty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety. District 5 is twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-eight. And verifying each number is within the target.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm kind of a boo. I'm gonna ask Patty, Patty mentioned something about precinct twenty-nine, thinking that should go from one to three. Patty, you can unmute.
Which, what are you talking about?
That's what I was asking her, is which scenario?
Sorry. It was the one where there was the error for ranches. Was that D?
That's, that's where it goes from Scenario E. Ranches North was allocated to, I think, District 1, and it should correctly be allocated to District 3.
Yeah, and so it also shows that Flagstaff twenty-nine there goes from 1 to 3.
Okay, that is another correction on our.
So tell me, what's Scenario?
All right. E.
E. So on Scenario E, precinct Flagstaff twenty-nine goes from District 1 to District 3. So the total additions.
Okay, say it again, sorry.
Yeah. On Scenario E. Flagstaff twenty-nine goes from District 1 to District 3. The total additions, under Scenario E, for District 3 are twenty-nine, Flagstaff twenty-nine. Ranches North eighty-one. Ranches South eighty-four.
Thank you.
Those are the total additions.
Thanks, Patty.
Any other corrections, Patty?
Nope, you guys did a great job.
All right, so we're now, we're going to.
We ready for Scenario C, Madam Chair?
Scenario C numbers, please, thank you.
District 1, population, under Scenario C, twenty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-five. District 2, population, thirty thousand two hundred and eighty-five. District 3, twenty-nine thousand eighty-one. District 4, twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. District 5, twenty-nine thousand four forty-three. And check again, our verification is that all districts are within target population numbers.
Thank you. The adds and the subtracts.
Yes, Madam Supervisor, we'll make sure all the data, you have all the data, including what the changes.
So now we're on proposed Scenario D.
Proposed Scenario.
Numbers.
Population numbers for proposed Scenario D. District 1, twenty-eight thousand four oh five. District 2, twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-one. District 3, twenty-eight thousand four ninety-two. District 4, thirty thousand two forty-five. District 5, twenty-eight thousand six seventy-eight. And another quick check verifies that. All scenarios are within the part of the population targets.
Thank you, and that's proposed Scenario E.
Proposed Scenario E, population, District 1, twenty-nine thousand two hundred and sixteen. District 2, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-five. District 3, thirty thousand three hundred and fifty-six. District 4, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six. District 5, twenty-seven thousand seven forty-eight. And quick check. Re-verifying. All districts are within the target population.
All right, then last, Scenario F.
Scenario F, populations, District 1, twenty-eight thousand four hundred and five. District 2, twenty-nine thousand three ninety-six. District 3, thirty thousand thirty-two. District 4, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-three. District 5, twenty-seven thousand six forty-five. And a check again. All populations in each district are within the target range.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I can just mention that all the information that we've gone over with the numbers that we just recited. The counties, your district, and websites.
Thank you very much. And with the changes that you just made, those will be made to the website too.
Yes, we'll add the directed graph that we've been following. We've got the two corrections that have just been noted for the precincts, and we'll make those corrections. We'll post this.
Those, those, those corrections, how does that change the numbers here?
It's in terms of the population.
Population, just.
It didn't seem significant. It was just the breakdown of the precincts changing. The population. The state was there, like which precinct, where the numbers didn't affect them.
Madam Supervisor, the, the sheet was incorrect, but the numbers are not that have been calculated in each one of the districts.
Thank you.
Only the sheets.
What is, what do you mean by that?
The sheet incorrectly reflected in the wrong district.
Oh, okay.
But it doesn't change the population without.
Okay. But all the, they give us the version in the.
That's correct.
And that's. Okay.
The people still.
Madam Chair, human error. Well, the computer did the right thing.
Wow, well, this is a lot of information, and it wasn't easy information. You could go cross-eyed, try and read the colors from the map. So, and then.
It gets better every ten years.
And then you get the precinct splits, and, you know, it just gets crazy. So, well, now, and, 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 unless you have something else to present, I think now is our, really, the opportunity that we have for the first time. As a board, to take a look at these scenarios. You know, I think it's important to note that it's important to get information and input from the board. It's also important to get information from the community. There may be some tweaks, et cetera, for this. And then ultimately, it's going to be up to the board to be making the decision. It is, as you know, a board decision, so. But at this point, with the criteria for redistricting that we, the board, set back at the beginning of this process. It's time for us to go through and analyze. And I don't know if we'd like to go per supervisor and have them go through the scenarios and explain how they feel in each scenario. Is that, does that sound good, or?
Impressions, responses.
Well, what's the, what would the board like to do? I'll be happy to start, if you want. I've been looking at this for months. So. And, you know, I think it's, it is, it's hard, because all of us, you know, have that part of our district that's near and dear, and that part of our district that's important to us. And maybe some parts of the district that maybe aren't as important to us. But I think that it's looking at the criteria. I'll be happy to go through the, the scenarios and present my two cents worth on this, as we go through. So, the Scenario A, that there are two changes, large changes in this scenario. That I find are disturbing, and, and, at least in my opinion, do not meet the criteria for redistricting. And those are that, for impacts to District 1, which, let me hold, is my district. And that is that having a splitting, Precinct Havasu sixty to be split from Precinct, or District 1. And Precinct Grand Canyon ninety-nine fifty-nine. These have been part of the District 1 for a long time. They certainly have been part of my, important part of my district for me, and a district that I have paid a lot of attention to since, both when I was running and since my election. Havasu people have maintained a camp, Havasu Pike Camp, on the south rim of the Grand Canyon, in Precinct fifty-nine, since the nineteen thirties. The Havasu Pike people call the south rim of the canyon their home, and they have for millennia. They have a close relationship, obviously, with Grand Canyon National Park, or a lot of work. And they attend school at the Grand Canyon Unified School District. So obviously, it doesn't make any sense to split Havasu sixty and Grand, Grand Canyon, Precinct fifty-nine. And there's really no valid reason. I think part of the reason we need for District 5 is we need to add numbers to District 5. But there's two hundred and twenty-seven residents in Precinct sixty. So it really is causing much more harm to the people and the communities of interest there than the two hundred and twenty-seven residents that it might add for Precinct number five. My other concern with Scenario A. Is, it's not clear why District 2 is being with, with, being completely with redrawn. To absorb Precinct Mormon Lake sixty-three, Blue Ridge forty-one, and Forest Lake fifty-three. Historically, District 2 has been primarily an urban district within the city of. Historically, district two has been primarily an urban district within the city of Flagstaff and is home to the largest population of Latino residents. Adding precincts like ten from precinct one would help to maintain that Latino population, and I agree with that. I think that precinct one, precinct ten from one should go, in fact, to district two. However, adding a large rural population, precinct sixty-three, forty-one, and fifty-three is not within the stated guidelines for the redistricting process. It dilutes the Latino vote. And even with the addition of precinct ten, which is, uh, that's, uh, that is Plaza Vieja is precinct ten. And so for that reason, for me, scenario A is just unacceptable. I, I don't believe it meets our standards and criteria, and so I'm not a fan of that. I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about scenario A before we move on to the other scenarios. Maybe that's when we should do it rather than going on and on. So scenario A, I, I've explained my concerns for it. District two, your thoughts on scenario A?
I concur. I feel that adding the rural areas, of course, like says, that the Latino population, which has traditionally and historically been part of district two. While I do appreciate the adding of district, uh, district ten, precinct, or precinct ten, excuse me, to connect Plaza Vieja. I feel that the adding the ruralness further south does dilute the Latino population more than, than precinct ten adds to it. So I'm not in favor of scenario A.
Matt, you're next up.
I'm next up. So I'm, you know, developing thoughts associated with it. I'm not giving my full rationale. I want to hear from people on what happens. And yet, as, you know, you, you all have a different focus for using our criteria. In the end, it is our decision and our interpretation of the, uh, the criteria that we're looking at. And, and I'm hearing you, you know, we do want to maintain minority, majority districts. By the same token, retaining districts as they were. We try and do that, but they're often a change. So there are aspects that happen associated with it. The, the idea of being all an urban district. It's, it could also be a broader piece. You know, depending upon how it's divided. I pretty much want to listen to what's happening, you know, focus on, on, you know, if I focus on district three, communities of interest that were consistent with the district three. Totally been a Flagstaff district, and what's happening in most of the scenarios is withdrawing from the Flagstaff area. And so that community of interest component is one that I, I get a little bit more focused on, looking at that. It's, you know, it's not my top map, but I haven't delineated all my criteria. I want to hear pro and con associated with it. As I look at Timberline Burnwood, the Burnwood component, there's, there's a big fracture associated with Donnie Park in that area, when, in that area. And yet you see that in most maps. So there's a need to pick up population, which I understand, trying to meet the other criteria. But that's happening with that. The real difficulty that I see, which isn't a criteria piece, a discussion piece, just for mine, is boy, oh, boy, that, that would be a hard district to represent. It's, uh, geographically, it certainly is, uh, pretty big. Of course, they are, all are, when you start to drive around, they're big towns. But you do have the fracturing of the, uh, the canyon on the western side associated with that. Looking at that, if it's national parks inside. And processing that. As I looked at the numbers, one piece that I really wanted to concentrate on as I looked at all these. And, you know, they're pretty much a team. The, when we get to our, our first criteria associated with the, or second. We met all our criteria, they're all maps. We already went through for number one, and that is plus or minus five percent. So we know all those maps are that way. So if we do modifications, we need to keep an eye on that. But the, uh, potential dilution of minority groups, particularly associated with a majority-minority district, is, that was a piece that I was watching for, not to get that dilution factor. It will be to some degree because minority populations aren't growing as much as non-minority populations. So that will happen all the way across the board. The question is, is there intent to not delete it further, knowing that proportional shift is occurring? And so I kept an eye on that as we looked at this. And, and that's a team for, and it's district five, that it is the majority-minority district that, uh, from a voting rights, that component that we take a look at on that. Also, watching the Hispanic population, I was watching that for district two. As you walk through, and there's a slight dilution factor, it's not significant as you go through each of these scenarios, but a very important aspect that we talked about on that. And similarly, I have to, I have to go through a comparative. But district four, again, that voting age population is what we're looking for, has a, a big factor to take a look at both, both populations, quite frankly. Whether it's the total population, but the voting age population, which is the stronger interest associated with that. That's right, that was, for district four, it was a higher number as I went through these and took a look at it. So it, you know, it fulfills that intent for district four. I'm fully vetted it though, because I wanted to go through a hearing process, and I didn't know how we would process this today. I was looking at, uh, knowing that we need to look at the criteria, I wanted to hear what staff presented. We're seeing some scenarios associated with it today on that. And then how do the people interpret it? But coming back and getting conclusions, pro and con, which is better or worse, I'm not fully, I'm fully vetted in that, that perspective. I probably said enough.
Well, I, um, district five today is the forty-fifth largest. If, if it was a standard local county, it would be the forty-fifth largest county geographically in the country today, as it is. And this will probably be the number one largest district. And district five, so district five was created as a rural county district. And this wraps off the way around. When you really look at the community of interest. I think that that's something that we really need to make that. The meeting of interests is, um, I think it really represents that, there's that on both sides of the wraps that wraps around Flagstaff. And over here with the Havasu Pi. Yeah, that right there. So I think that I'd like to really look at that. As far as district two. You know, we've been really tracking this, the minority, majority, that it does have, there is, you, there is an impact. Always, um, our minority population. Currently, when you look at the numbers, um, the current population in district two is seventy-five hundred. And then in this scenario, it's seventy-one. This is the Latino. And then the, uh, district. Voting age is, the current is fifty-four. And in scenario A is fifty-two. I think it's really important for us to really keep track of that. So, but all in all, it doesn't really. The scenario A just doesn't. That's why I keep saying. It comes with a helicopter.
Alright. So let's go on to scenario B. Anybody have any comments on you? No, I'll be happy to start this. I'm more than willing to let other people start this.
I did it to her, I mean, what I, you know.
Yeah, we guess we're the first. Scenario B, uh, the analysis, let me pull this back up here. I, I find scenario B, and, and again, I, I, and this is all subject to getting here, and I think we all know that, getting input from the community. And, uh, but this, as I said, is the first time we as a board have had an opportunity to talk about it. So I think it's important that we as a board can talk about how we see the, the different scenarios and, and where we might find some concerns for the scenarios. Now, I, I find that scenario B is, I think, more in line with the criteria that we established. It's, it's out of the six, it's certainly not my favorite, but I think it is more in line. In terms of district one, it, um, keeps sixty-nine or fifty-nine, Tucson, uh, and the Grand Can, I'm sorry, fifty-nine, the Grand Canyon Inn with sixty, which is Supai, which I think is essential. And it's also for me, at least essential there in district one. I think everybody knows that. Uh, district four loses precinct sixty-three, forty-one, and fifty-three. And still maintain that rural nature that's shared by three and four. District four is losing Cameron, and because of that, and I think that the necessity for that is not to make even the world's largest district for, for Lena Fowler, even though it'd be good to go down in the Guinness Book of Records. But, but it's because we need to get a, a population touch in there in order to meet the requirements of the law. And the only place where there's a large population center is through Cameron. And, and, and then, of course, then that brings down Timberline Burnwood, um, as a population center. And if that's the case, you know, I still have some concerns with district, um, four, and Judy's not with us, but because that has also been the second largest concentration of tribal lands and probably Navajo voters. And so since forty-three is really a good group, a large group of, of voting, voting population, substantially more than inscription house and Navajo mountain, it gives that district four, if you will, doesn't lose the tribal lands, uh, and the tribal land portion of that. So I'm, I mean, at this point, if she gives up forty-three, she loses that tribal lands portion of her district. So I would prefer to see sixty-one and seventy-one inscription house and Navajo mountain in with four. But a, a, and again, I think it has to do with the Navajo votes and tribal lands. And I, and I'm, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying, Matt. But I, it also does dilute that vote for four. And so I'm just, I, I, I I know that, I'm cognit, cognizant of that. But district, I believe, scenario B with, with really that concern is, is probably acceptable. And I do like that district two remains primarily a Latino, of the largest Latino population. And I would be giving up eight, which is, um, uh, consistent with sixteen, eight and sixteen. You know, supervisor Vazquez and myself, we have walked these precincts so much because it's part of that museum fire scar area. And, and eight and sixteen, Shadow Mountain and Swiss Manor, they're really very, very, um, even though they're, they're near and due to my heart, my, my biggest supporters came from eight. But they really are very twin neighborhoods and are, are certainly being affected by some of the things we're seeing, so. I love my people in eight, but I, I think that that makes sense and it keeps, it keeps two primarily Latino and primarily, uh, urban, which is how it's always been. So my, my thoughts on scenario B.
I'll go ahead and go next. Again, looking at scenario B, it is one of the largest scenarios of an all-urban district for district two. Part of the reason that eight was suggested to be part of sixteen was not only that they're complementary neighborhoods and very similar. The real only difference is the split of Fourth Street. But in this process of dealing with the museum flood fires, really, eight and fifteen in the sunny side, having, having that interconnected in one district allows for more focus on that district. Though, while we have worked well together in two separate districts dealing with the museum flood impacts, having the, those, both those areas, the Paradise Grandview area and the sunny side area in the same district would help facilitate some more response than what we were able to do at this time. I do appreciate the numbers and, uh, for the Latino population and seeing how to, how, how this provides a little bit of growth in terms of the voting population of the Latino vote. And so for that reason, I would be okay with, uh, with scenario B.
I have, just to make sure, I'd be, is fifty-nine and sixty remain with one. I just want to make sure that that's clear in there, because it is a mine, and I have a comment here. Oh, never mind, it is, I'm just, should be to make.
I, I've caught in the wrong scenario.
It does.
So easy to do it, I think, your, your head starts to spin.
Where are we? Which map are we on?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. So scenario, uh, B, again. And actually, I didn't mention it for A, so communities of interest, as I look at it, in terms of, uh, uh, district three, uh, what is it? The precinct twenty-three has always been that, that kind of anchor on the Lake Mary communities.
Kind of anchor on the Lake Mary, uh, communities. Uh, and so in all but one scenario, twenty-three is removed from District Three. And so it does fracture that, that community of interest, uh, and so, um. It, it happens in A, it happens in, uh, um, all scenarios, but I think it's the, uh, on that. So that, that is a note and.
That's Conrosta Trail, is that right, two, twenty-three?
No, no, twenty-three is Dona Ara. Uh, combination. Uh, it is that, that growth component on the south end of Lone Tree. Uh, you know, I can see that, I know, the, uh, shift in this population base and how communities of interest. Uh, will shift with time on what's going on.
Can you switch twenty and twenty-three?
I don't, I don't know if that's.
There's.
It's happening.
Tiny dot right there. It's just a tiny dot. But, you know, within the cities, there's more population, that's all I'm saying, I don't know what the population.
Yeah, I think, uh.
You know, sometimes it's a lot. Just for this, this particular map, I'm just wondering, I'm sure it's like, I think it's like that in all, in all the other maps. Um. I mean, man is bringing it out that twenty-three is out of this district and. It is always been part of that district. So I'm just wondering, twenty-three and twenty-four are twenty and twenty, I don't know what the population on those two are. Or is that just a vacant lot out there?
Twenty is, uh, now you, so it has a higher population associated with it.
For, for precinct twenty, which is. That's four thousand nine, so total operation. Um, and then twenty-three is thirty-three eighty-two. Uh, so there's a little bit more in twenty, I think. So the issue there would be, we're giving twenty-three to District Four. And, um, so it would mess with, uh. We have to play with Districts Two, Three, and Four to, to find the balance there.
It would be a curiosity factor, I think there is one scenario in here.
There is.
Where it is brought over into District Two. Uh, the interesting piece on that is it unifies, uh, NAU into. A, a single voting area with, uh, multiple, uh, precincts, uh, which seems to make sense. So, uh, it's one that, you know, we might play around with, you know, I'm, I'm curious.
Yeah, I'm showing, so that is Scenario D, which does that.
Yeah, I'm playing that right now. That was, that was kind of my number one once, when I was taking a look at, um, all these maps. I thought, oh, NAU's a, 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 a community of interest, uh. Uh, twenty-three, that Lake Mary component was in there, uh, on it, um.
I liked D a lot better too than B.
Yeah.
And, and B hurts you more than D, yeah.
Yeah, B, B was, uh, B and F were like, you know. I did it by rankings, you know, taking a look at communities of interest, numbers, uh, consistency, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the, the flag staff dynamics, uh, community of interest and how they play now.
You want to just rank them instead of going through them?
I, I, you know, that's what I did, but, you know, you guys were, I was going to read until April twelfth to, to quickly criteria attached to them. And I, and I was curious, everybody was going to come in with numbers.
We could just rank them.
You want to do that?
Yeah, I'll make it quicker.
That would be a lot quicker probably, but.
Mm-hmm, because a lot of this rationale.
Matt, why don't you start with this, you're, you're ranking first and then I'll, you happy to give my ranking?
My, my ranking would be, uh, D is number one.
Which one?
Uh, D.
D as a dog.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
E as number two. Um, and, and then, um. Uh, C is number three. A is number four. And really, um, because of, uh, breaking up neighborhoods, the component. But, um, uh, B and F, I, they were kind of, they weren't high in total poll, uh, in terms of.
Five and six?
Yeah. In terms of, yeah.
Uh, you want to, you want to rank them?
Sure. Uh, if I were to go through and rank them, I would go through the scenario going top to bottom. Scenario D, Scenario F.
So Scenario D is one, D?
D.
Or B?
D, as in dog.
Okay.
Uh, Scenario F.
Mm-hmm.
Scenario B. Scenario E. Scenario C and Scenario A.
All right. Then Lena, you want to rank them? I'm sorry, Judy's not here for this, because this would be important. Yeah. I can see. So. Judy's not going to be able to join us.
Sorry to hear that. I mean, plus, there is, I'm more important.
Okay, so mine is, um, number. E. He is one, number E. And then F. C. C is three, okay. B, D, and A.
Could you say that again, please?
It's E. F, C, B, D, and A. E, F, B, A. So, Scenario A. Is one, is that right? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's not true. Scenario E is one.
Are you talking about?
What do you mean? Five, just for five.
Are you talking about Lena's or?
Yes.
You know, okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's E, F, C, B, B, A.
E, F, C, B, B, A. Right?
Well, actually, let me, let me do that again.
Okay, so it's E. Um, F because of the Lake Mary population. C, B, D as a dog, and A. Thank you. Okay. Mine would be. F would be one. D would be two. And B would be. Three. And. I have, uh, A, C, and E is unacceptable. So whatever ranking one you want to put in, they're all equal, six. C, and what else?
If you read it, A, C, E, so I'm putting it in that order.
A, C. Okay, A. C and E, yeah. Wow, E must have been up there.
Could you repeat here, so I didn't have enough.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. You're right.
Mm-hmm.
Mine were D, E, C, A. And then mine unacceptable were B and F.
B and F?
Correct. Let me just say we're all over the map.
Yeah, you know, interestingly, uh, you know, D is probably got most of our. D is the most acceptable for most of us, I know Lena, it's five, but for three of us anyway, and. And D, um. Yeah, D is one that. See, this one doesn't work though. Switch forward and the, and fifty-nine. And it just. Doesn't work. So I have a question to ask, just, uh, the, um, supervisors here. You know, when we go out and put a map in the public, we're saying to the public. That these are options that we're going to consider, right? What my concern is, is if, and it's ultimately our decision, and of course, we're, we're missing a board member here. Uh, and who knows, you, you can always be the, the, the minority vote. Um, but if, if there's a scenario that's absolutely not acceptable, shouldn't we even put it out there? And I, and I'm asking the question. So, I mean, I, we can put all six out there, get the, but we don't need to put six. We could put three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we could put four, I mean, the point of it is, we don't need to put six out there. And, you know, I, I felt a little bit like led down the primrose path of destruction, the IRC a little bit. On, on, you know, just the things they weren't even going to consider. And yet they put it out there like this was a legitimately good response, so. Uh, I'm just, I'm just raising it, I have no problem with putting all six out if that's the consensus, um, but yeah.
I agree with you, if we had our fifth board member here and could have that priority of this, but since we can't, I don't feel like we can do that at this time.
I agree.
Not only that, but the maps are on the site.
Um. Are the maps already on the site?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, they, they were posted as a public information since, when we, when we.
Never mind.
Well, but, yeah, they, they, they're, they were posted for the purposes of, they were part of the public pack.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, so your, your discussion today does not alter whatever your decision is.
It's just if we're, like, quit putting something out there for public comment if we have no intention as a board of ever accepting. I'm not sure that that does anybody any good or any justice. Uh, on the other hand, I also don't have any profit in all six out, and I think that Supervisor Vazquez makes a good point. And I feel different if we could get the input from all five board members supervisors, but we don't, so.
Well, with that in turn, do we, do we want to schedule a second work session to get the input of five?
I hate to say that, but even if it was, even if it was short and hopefully. Uh, you know, we could have Sue or you go, go over this with, um, Judy to kind of bring her up to speed. I mean, I, this has been very helpful to go through this and, and get the intricacies on this, so. And we're all those little dots that we're really supposed to go, so, um. Yeah, I, 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 how does everybody feel? I, I, I see that, uh, Piranha was shaking his head, yes, an hour, another hour? Matt?
Another, I, I don't.
And so, so we can get Judy's input. Get another hour.
A shorter, let's do a second work session.
Oh, a second work session, uh, to do that. Um. Yeah, I, I mean, we, we are losing that, that opportunity otherwise, uh, and we're trying to put the maps out there as. We, we sort of added them and, and what are we looking at?
Uh. It also provides the opportunity to ensure supervisors be to find to their rankings.
It, it's, it's not just that, but, but, um, you know, it's interesting by looking at the rankings, it makes. Makes you just say, okay, this one, one map. Uh, doesn't seem to be meeting it, but these other maps are, might, might be played around with, you know, uh, to see. And, and I don't mean played around with in a, in a bad way. What I'm saying is, we could shift things back and forth to see if we can align more consistency, uh. With the objectives, uh, and, and how, you know, we're perceiving them to meet the criteria, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's some.
They, they might overlap, you know, creating an opportunity.
Yes, um, Charlesman, yeah, that's true, we could start earlier, March eighth, um, so we're starting at four now. We can start at three. Uh, we don't have, we have a very light evening meeting at six.
I think that's a great way to do it, then we can get Judy's input on this.
When is it, on the eighth? It's a light day. It's a light agenda, we start at three.
Or if you need more time than an hour, just depending on.
You know what, if we could do maybe starting at two o'clock on the eighth. It's the opportunity for the board to, you know, to, to catch up on, on.
Yeah.
With District Five, Four rather. Like, tune in more discussion, because it will. And then we're going to the, the light, it's a light agenda. So the, the, it works well for us.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to get, uh, i- i- this is the first time we've been able to talk as a board on this. So I think it'd be great to get Judy's input on this, so.
We posted for two, two o'clock on the eighth.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I agree, I think that it's important that we do meet for at least another hour or two. And I like the idea of doing it before the board meeting since it's a light day, so that way it doesn't pile on too much extra work for the staff.
I just, we understood the point, it's all full agenda.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, well, you show up here, why don't you show up here? I think you should start the session, I'm not about that.
Sorry.
You all have the public health decisions. You all show up when it's all done.
So we'll, we'll, we're ready to do it on two o'clock on the eighth.
Okay, and, and, does everybody, so sound good to everybody except for you?
Rose, you're signing back.
So. And then, yeah, we can take this and kind of refine it and take a closer look at it, so, um. Wow, this was a lot, this was really, really helpful and thank you all, and I, Sue, Sue, this is.
Shannon, I started a cover meeting for me, but Nate has a question.
I guess I just wanted to make a comment. There's a. There's an idea, do you want to possibly create a scenario? Do that before, because the eighth is a public meeting, right?
No, it, it's, it's, it's not a public, so it'd be another work session.
I got the statement, sorry.
So we're good, no, let me start out.
A window there, if we create more scenarios before.
Well, my concern about doing that without Judy's input is, I mean, I think that's the reason we're doing this. So I, and even though, thank you for that, I understand what you're saying is. Uh, but if, I think that without her input, adding to the dilemma is not necessarily going to make it easier. So, uh, I think it'd be good to hear from her on these six and see if she has any tweaks. I mean, I, I would like to see a, a tweak on D, if that's where we're going, um, for, uh, Navajo Mountain and inscription house. And that would be for Four, but. For uh, Navajo Mountain inscription house. And that would be for four, but if four tells me she doesn't care about that now. You know, I mean, I, I, to me, it seems like, like uh, it would be a trade off with Cameron, but she really needs to. We need to hear from her on that.
So I believe when's the first virtual session with the ones twelve, well, Saturday, March twelve, the meeting starts. So we've got.
We have some time.
Eleven in the round to your, you know, delay and.
Well, this is great. We're going to leave with more paper than we came with. I love that. So Supervisor Vasquez, Vice Chair Vasquez.
Thank you. So just to be clear, so we will have a work session on the eighth. And then if there need to be any tweaks on any of the maps, they'll be ready for the twelfth, the first public forum. Is that the idea?
And, and I think that we might and we might not. But if we feel that there is one map or two maps that just are not going to cut it. Uh, we may choose not to include that as part of the discussion, but I think that's for, for the discussion after Judy's with us.
Yeah, you can see a pattern here, but there's one that stands out for sure.
Yeah.
And then so those decisions that the board will be making will be ready for us to then show with the look on the twelve.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
All right, yeah. Anybody that Supervisor Fowler, any, any further comments?
When I read out what I have, just vote yes.
Supervisor Ryan, any further comments?
Uh, in my comments, you know, I'm going to go back and, and start looking at, you know, uh. The, some of the, the ones that stand out. And, and see if there's a potential overlap that achieves our objectives uh, associated with it. Um, so, you know, it's an opportunity to uh, try and work with that and, and see how that. There might, you know, there might be some natural patterns here.
I think.
Although I think you guys tried every natural pattern. Legal, but, but we'll leave the, you know, the two ones there, you know, try. Yeah, we haven't tried a lot. I think. So you, you, we'll go through a vector that you did through about five times before. So it didn't really work, but it's, it's.
That's fine. You have the ability, you have to do that. So.
Well, the other is to look at twenty and twenty-three. Put NAU together if that's possible. And then just really looking at the minority um, population. And making sure that those are within that border rights.
Correct.
I'm just going to re, go back and relook at, um, look at it, maybe change if necessary.
Yeah, I'm usually working on communities of interest.
Yes, that's right. Well, communities of interest and really quite frankly, maintaining the traditional geographic and political boundaries. Uh, you know, obviously goes without saying that we want to not dilute the uh, voting strength of any minority group. I mean, that's number one. To me, it's communities of interest. And then, uh, you know, compact, I mean, I think there's a, they're all important, but I think there are some that are, are, are more equal than others. Is that the way to say it?
But that's, you know, that's the decision. We all have a different perception, you know, and these are our criteria. And when we, you know, when we did the criteria, we didn't, um, you know, I think we came back and said, no, none of these outrank the other. Is that what we said? You know, they're basically all, we put them out there. Uh, in terms of, you know, the one now, uh, is from the legal side of, you know, protecting that uh. Majority, minority district is very important, you're saying.
At least with the section five.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That meets the section five requirements, which quite frankly is a high threshold.
Mm-hmm.
So Madam Chair for the meeting on next, uh, the eighth. Uh, since you'll all be here for the work session, if you prefer, we can just have the, the, the board meeting here.
That would work for me.
So you'll take your dinner break five and be here for the thirty, six o'clock, and we'll be doing. Factory might, you might even have work, the rest of our technology in this way. So, but if not, we can do this.
So put your pajamas away. And do you fit in your new clothes or do you have to go get a new set?
Very quickly, just to unacknowledge the staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really was.
Oh, these guys, yeah.
Well, I love that. Thank you. Um, County Manager and all, thank you. And it's four thirty and enjoy your night. And again, thank you all. And Rose, we're going to miss you so much. So good luck to you. Yeah, I know. We're, we're going to find out where your office is and we'll, we'll.
Yeah, you need to decompress.
Thank you.